I will call this meeting of the Tyler ISD Board of Trustees to order. We do have a quorum and the meeting has been duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. Thanks, everybody, for coming out. It's an exciting day. We've got a lot of fun things to cover here. And first, we'll jump in with public participation. Do we have anybody sign up, Gina? Okay, nobody signed up. Okay, so, yeah, we're covering a lot of stuff. We have the couple new officers we're swearing in and one that we're saying goodbye to. And we're reorganizing the board today and going over a couple of other things. So, first of all, we'll take it consideration and action on the results for the May General Trustee election.
Mr. Washman, I move that we approve the administration recommendation that the results for the May General Trustee election proclaiming Artis Newsom as single trustee for, as trustee for Single Member District Two and Patricia A. Nation as trustee for Single Member District Four for a term of three years.
Okay.
Chair.
Mr. Burkfield and Ms. Mason, have the first and the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Now, well, we got to swear in. We have the oath of office for our school trustees coming up next, so.
We'll bring the Board Secretary up, that's Ms. Gina Orr, to conduct the oath of office for our new trustees. Ms. Orr?
Yes, having been presented with the certificate of election and executed the statement, officer, I will ask the three of you to please stand and raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
Artis Newsom.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the Office of Trustee.
Of the Office of Trustee.
Of the Tyler Independent School District.
Of the Tyler Independent School District.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will, to the best of my ability.
And will, to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, and at this time, if you will, please execute the oath of office in front of you. And then you may take your seat. Reverend Mason, we want to thank you for your many, many years of service and we certainly appreciate your dedication. It's been a pleasure.
It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
And before you go, once again, it has been such an honor and privilege to serve with you. You were the first board president I ever served with and I learned so much from you over the years, over the seven years now that it's been. And I'm sad to see you go, but I'm sure we'll have time after all this mess is over to do a proper celebration, you know, and we can really, really speak on it then. But we love you and we appreciate your service to the board.
Love you too.
Reverend Mason.
Yes.
Got a few comments here before you run off. We've been through a lot together over the years. Sometimes I wish people didn't use the school systems for political purposes, but we kind of end up being a soft target sometimes. You, I admire you for having a higher calling than, than our earthly, you know, things are pulled us towards. You know, you always had a higher calling and someone you answered to and, and I will say that you have been responsible more than anyone for keeping this board and superintendent team together over the time you've been on the board. There's many times where, you know, it could have, it could have gone bad like we read about and like we see when we go to yearly meetings and hear about other boards. So, thank you for keeping us all together. We will miss that part of you. The last thing I want to say is District Two's in a better place than it was before you came into the district. You've had a great impact on that part of town and, and there are so many kids that have benefited from that, that you'll just never know what an impact you had. So, I'm going to miss you. Appreciate you for loving this district and loving your community and loving each one of us. Thank you.
Love you too. Thank you.
My friend, Orenthia, I don't even have the words to say that you, to say what impact you've had on me, on my life and on my service on the board. You've been a model for me. And I'm not going to be able to say much. I love you.
Love you too.
Thank you for being you and thank you for everything. Thank you for your life and your, your impression on everybody around you. I just love you, sis.
Love you too. Thank you.
Can't say enough about the impact you've made on the district and the community. It spans generations and that's for sure something to be proud of. On a personal note, I want to thank you for just being an example of how to lead, not just sitting up here, but in your faith and in our one-on-one conversations. In many ways, you, like Andy said, you're kind of the conscience of this board and I've learned a lot from you. I'm definitely going to miss you. Board's going to miss you tremendously. But I look forward to seeing you at football games this fall.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Love you too.
Well, I said a little something in the last meeting, but you have a preacher microphone and they're never going to say no. You know, I love you. I respect you. You are so authentic. The Orenthia we see on this dais, the one we see at church, the one we see in the community, the one when we have coffee or breakfast, it's the same Orenthia. And by that, I mean, your faith, as Mr. Burkfield said, your faith, and Mr. Martinez, your faith is what drives you. Your love for your neighbor broadly defined is what drives you. Always have a laser focus on what's good for kids. And in that respect, has really been kind of the North Star for our board in that as there are pushes and pulls for us to deal with other stuff, you always helped us stay focused on kids. And to bring issues that maybe we didn't understand how they impacted kids, you would make sure we understood that. So, I know you're not going anywhere. We're not going anywhere. We still want to see you. You know, the Foundry is open, so I can meet you for coffee as long as we socially distance. Happy to do that. So, I love you. This, the, I've never known serving on the board without you. I'm not looking forward to that experience. No disrespect to any of our new folks, but you are a truly special individual who I love greatly and am going to miss serving with, but I hope I don't miss you because I hope I get to see you.
I love you too. Thank you.
Orenthia?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to say thank you for being a mentor. I've known you for many years, way before you got on school board, back when you were back at Griffin, ruling the roost over there. So, I admired you. I admired the work that you've done. I've supported you in a number of things that you've done and I will continue to do that. I appreciate the information that you've given me, the insight, and the willingness to be there for me as I go forth, taking on the big challenge of filling your shoes, whatever that may be. I love you. Always will.
Love you too.
Thank you very much.
Well, thank you.
Rev?
Yes, sir.
Before you get going, I'd like to say something. I'm a pretty emotional guy, so I'm going to try not to look at you while I talk to Every time I drive through Brownsboro, Texas, I think of you.
Don't look.
You know the story. I couldn't talk when you called me. And offered me the job. At the stoplight in Brownsboro, Texas. And I, my wife and I work a static. Thank you. That's it.
This is by far the greatest board I have ever served on. The relationship among the board members is indescribable. The love that we have for one another and the respect that we have, even when we disagree, we've learned how to listen to each other and how to work together. We've had some great days and we've had some ooh wee mama days. But through it all, this board stayed together. We put the best interests of children first. I'm leaving, I hope the community understands this, I'm leaving a new family. I have some white sons and some Hispanic little brothers and some, my white sister. It's good when you can look beyond the color of skin and see people for who they really are. Young man, I have seen you grow. Your dad sent me an email, I don't know if you know that. And I want you to know, I'm very proud of the growth that you have made and the man that you have become. You're an awesome father, beautiful husband, but I'm proud of the board member you have become. And I pray that God will continue to bless you and keep you. Andy and I have had some days together that many of you are not aware of, but there were days when we had to sit down and try and decide what direction we needed to go in as a board and what this district needed to do. And it's good when you can sit down, as the Bible said, and reason together. I love you and thank you. Your mom and I are around the same age and interesting enough, we all play tennis. So, I tell your mom, I'm ready to play some more tennis. Trish knows that her husband is my boyfriend. And I see my boyfriend out there this morning. He always looked out for me at the football games. I appreciate that, Cal. Aaron, greatness is coming your way and I will be watching to see you as you lead on this board. My preacher friend, we've had more conversations than anyone on this board. We've talked about life, about God, about the city of Tyler, about the school district. And we just sat and just talked. I will miss those talks as well, Rev. I pray that this, this board will continue to be the board that you've been, an awesome board. Guys, you are joining a wonderful group. A group of men and women who actually put children first. But it's a board who knows how to work together. We're not here to fight each other. And you may not always agree, but we know how to sit down and do what's best for Tyler ISD. We have a superintendent who is a member of our team. I call him my son. Like him, oh boy, okay. And he's been my son since we have sat and talked about this school district, this city of Tyler and East Texas area. I thank you for stepping up to the plate. When Andy and I sat down and talked with you, we told you, you would discover many things that needed to be done. And with joy in your heart and a smile on your face, you've tackled those challenges. And I thank you for that. My prayer is that you continue to lead this district in an awesome way and we can't help but be better and do greater things under your leadership. To your team, your team, you have an awesome team. And they looked out for us when we went to conventions, especially the older sisters. Make sure we got to where we needed to go, but I appreciate your leadership. Tasha and I go back farther than any of your team. When I was a principal, Tasha was a drill master. She had to make sure that money balanced and you did everything you needed to do. And she taught us how to take care of business. And Tasha, I appreciate that. Ron, keep being that good man that you are leading and directing. Doc, keep being that leader you are with curriculum and instruction. This attorney of ours and I go back farther than any of you. And I thank you for the love you have for Tyler ISD. I know we pay you, but you have a, you have a love for this district and I appreciate that. You and your son for what you're doing. And so, to all of you, it's been a, I've had a blast. It's been a wonderful journey. This is not the end. This is just the beginning of my next chapter in life and only God knows what that is. But I guarantee you, I won't be sitting down. I see my dear friend, Joanne Hampton, there. We've been through some challenging times together, supporting each other. And Joanne, Marty just assured us, we have a seat in the press box. We'll be at the football games. So, to the spouses of the board millers, they're in for a wonderful treat and I pray that you will support them when there are long nights and when the days either may be long. But just be there to support them and encourage them. Now, to all of you, I love you, God bless you, and God keep you.
Thank you. This is not show, social distance.
Need a microphone to drop.
Sir?
Need a microphone to drop.
All right. Yes, sir. Do I need to leave any of this up here for? No?
I think they've got everything.
All right. Do I get my name later?
Take it now.
Take a whiff.
You want it?
Thank you. I love you all. God bless. Thank you.
Love you.
Okay, so, does that, Artis, would you, oh, you got your nameplate down there? You're good? Okay, all right. So, now we come to the reorganization of the board. We do this every year and it's always kind of one of those things where nobody really knows what's going to happen going into it because of all the things Orenthia said and the way that we try to maintain a professionalism around here. So, I'll go ahead and I'll just say this, it's been an honor this year, serving as president, one of the biggest honors in my life for sure. And I just, whatever might happen, I do want to say that I've really, really enjoyed it, even though COVID hit and, you know, golly. But anyway, so, we'll go ahead. I think we normally do president first and vice president. We're going to do that this time anyway, so I'll take a motion or we can discuss if anybody's interested in being president this year, but we can go ahead and, and speak up on that.
Mr. Washman? We are in a middle of, in the middle of a crisis, the COVID crisis, and it's been handled thus far in a very good manner, thoughtful manner. At this time, I would, I think that it would be a good thing if you continued as president. So, at this time, I would like to nominate Wade Washman as president.
Thank you. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
A second.
Thank you. Mr. Hager? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Can we have a little discussion?
We can have a little discussion.
I just wanted to say that I think Wade's done a great job this year. I think he really has, has taken the role of a board president and it's not as someone that's above the board or someone that is over, has more power on the board. The board president's job is not to run over the board. It's to facilitate board meetings and to set agendas and to work with a superintendent to do what the board wants to get done on the agenda and to make some public appearances. So, I want to thank him for being humble and it not being about Wade this year. And I think you've done a great job, so just want to say that.
Thank you, Andy.
You know, we've been in a pattern of at least a couple of years and you're halfway through that and have done a good job. And like you always hear them say about presidents in general, you never know what crisis is going to show up that is not of your own choosing. And certainly, you are experiencing that. This COVID crisis is not one of your choosing, but you've continued to lead in the midst of it. You've done a fine job as president, keeping us calm, keeping us focused, keeping things working, maintaining a good positive relationship with the superintendent, healthy and productive. So, I fully support you for another year.
Well, thank you.
I feel like I have to jump in and just acknowledge the dad jokes and the humor that comes from the, from the president, so I certainly appreciate that too.
Okay. Well, y'all are sweet and it's a pleasure to serve and definitely didn't want to get into discussions about all that, but I do appreciate it. So, we've had a motion, we've had a second, we've had discussion. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the ayes have it. The motion carries. Thank you so much for this, this opportunity. It is one that I do treasure and I do take seriously, even though I do tell some bad jokes from time to time. Okay, so, the next item on the agenda is choosing a vice president. We had a vice president here and Ms. Mason that left and, and so now there's a vacancy there. So, do we have any discussion or any motions for that?
Mr. President, I'd like to nominate Mr. Martinez as vice president. He's my senior on the board by, I think, three weeks, but has demonstrated over the last five years his commitment to the board operating philosophy that we have followed. And that is to keep student achievement and the importance of the kids as job one. And so, I think he would be, he'd be a step in continuing that same direction in supporting you and your leadership of the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hager. Do I have a second? Okay. Do I have any other motion on the table? Or any discussion? Tell you what, let's, I guess, do, what do we?
I don't know. You're the president.
Well, we have, we got to have a vice president and since that occurred, I'll tell you what.
Well, I'll offer a second. You know, I'm, I'm new to the board, haven't worked with him, but I, I assume Mr. Hager know him well enough and feel like he can do the job as vice president, so I'd offer the second.
Okay. We have a motion? We have a second?
I'll just say that, I guess on behalf of myself, that, you know, I was here when we set vision of the district to set successful student outcomes and I've worked tremendously to do that along with all of you guys and we battled lots of tradition around here and I think we did that together, side by side, and happy to continue to do that under Wade's leadership. And, and, yeah, I would like to continue to do that.
Okay. We have a motion? We have a second? Any other discussion on this item?
You know, I think in fairness to Aaron, you know, I do have a question and I don't, I want to be, I want to be nice, I want to be fair, I want to be genuine. But something that I just never got an answer to and I never asked, but it was, I don't think anyone ever did. I noticed you protested the National Anthem for a period of time a few years ago. And I never asked you why you were doing that or what it was that was, you know, that, that was under your skin or?
Honestly, Andy, I don't know what you're talking about. I never remember protesting the anthem.
Okay.
I don't know where that came from. No, I don't know what that is. No, I honestly don't. Would be happy to answer, but no, I don't know what that comes from.
Okay.
I don't know if you heard that from someone or?
No, it was just observation.
Okay.
At different events that we went to. And that's why I need to ask you because if that wasn't anything, then, you know, that's...
No, I don't know what that is.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I'll go ahead and we've had a motion, we have a second, we've had discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I think, and all opposed? All right. Motion carries. Welcome, Mr. Vice President. I tell you what, let's, let's go ahead and move on to teacher incentive allotment.
Secretary.
Let's do, what's that?
Secretary.
Secretary? Oh, my goodness.
Have a volunteer in the audience that would like to be secretary?
Yeah.
I nominate Ms. Gina Orr.
A second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it? Motion carries? I tell you what, that's a, that's a tough job and we do appreciate Ms. Gina for all you do, every day for the district. Thank you. And thanks, board, for keeping me on point. You know, I'm, my brain is a little flighty, so it takes a village here. So, okay, now, we're moving on to teacher incentive allotment. I tell you what, though, before that, Aaron, come on. Sit right here. This is the, this is the vice president's seat. As long as I've been around. All right. Okay, Marty, what do we have on the teacher incentive allotment plan application?
In accordance with our timeline that we've set in an application to be part of Cohort C for the teacher incentive allotment, this is a, another presentation of the teacher incentive allotment as afforded by the last legislative session. In conversations with Texas Education Agency, the teacher incentive allotment looks like it's, at least for now, with the financial forecast, going to receive protection as this is a long-term initiative that will supersede, or at least their hope is to supersede, any type of fiscal impacts from whatever the economy is doing to the Texas budget. So, we're actually applying for that. We've gone over this a little bit with you, had a presentation, I believe, at the last, was it the last regular meeting? Regular meeting. We've also had one in-person meeting with our, with our committee, made up of a diverse group of our school system, teachers of the year from campuses, different ethnicities represented, principals served on it, even someone from the teacher organization served on it as well, representing teacher organizations, served on it as well. So, we're at the point now that we want to bring this to the board to provide the opportunity of what the actual structure would look like. Once we got to that point, we've got Dee Carney, I think, that's actually going to...
What, Dee, what, did you get volume?
Couldn't get volume.
Looked good.
Okay, so, we've got Laura Cano, we've got Ron Jones in here, Dr. James Kuratin, Director of Assessment Accountability, that will, will take us through the, the teacher incentive allotment, what that could potentially look like for Tyler ISD if we're approved. Remember, for our last meeting, there's, this is the data gathering year, although who knows what that's going to look like? I'm talking about this coming school year of 2021, where we actually provide our data to Texas Tech. They look at the validity of that data and then wind up stamping that in, submitting it to TEA, and then TEA does the final approval of what our structure looks like. And as we go through the presentation here, I'll have some other comments along with staff and certainly we'll welcome your questions as well. Tasha Bjork will also be presenting as well. Tasha Bjork will also be presenting as well. Harry, I don't think... Go to the podium and introduce it.
Go to the podium because anybody...
I don't think anyone can hear.
Anybody that's watching elsewhere wouldn't be able to hear you.
Good morning, Board. President Washman, welcome back. All right. Thank you, guys, for having me this morning. As Dr. Crawford mentioned, you guys greenlit us at the last board meeting to make application for the teacher incentive allotment through TIA. And so, the work has gone into preparing the actual application and there's a lot that goes into that part, but the meat and potatoes of it is what actually comes out in the wash as it pertains to what teachers that meets one of the designations will receive as a result of their hard work, to incentivize them to be in our most needy, at our most needy campuses. So, with that said, we have a sample of what that looks like for a teacher that earns a designation. And you guys have access to the actual application to read what's in it, but this is actually the meat and potatoes of what we're petitioning the TEA to permit us to do if we are approved. And just as we're going through, and part of this airplane is being built not on our end as we're flying, but the rules are coming out as we're flying this airplane. Just find out, just found out this morning, listening to a Zoom meeting, that as the applications are pushed through and the deadline, the first deadline is upon us next week, I believe, that there will be opportunity to amend the application even as soon as the fall semester. Depends on what happens as they are looking at the applications and what districts are having to do to adjust to say what is, increases in student academic achievement because of everything that we're going through right now. There's no star testing this year, so there will not be the opportunity to see what kids are going to do there and what growth they may have made from last year to this year. So, you're going to have those kinds of gaps in the data. And so, there will be an opportunity to amend the application moving forward. So, without further ado, I'm going to bring, it's Tasha that you're going to come up and walk through the funding example.
Okay, good morning.
Good morning.
The teacher incentive allotment funding example, this is from the state, the first page given. And they basically break it down into three designations, recognized, exemplary, and master. And there's a base, as you can tell the amounts in that column, and then there's a multiplier. And what is done with the multiplier, they use the census tiers, that's why the census data is so important. The, there are five tiers and then the non-echo, the first column, and each tier is worth a point value. And so, you basically find out the percentages of each tier at each campus and come up with an amount. We are non-rural, so we're always the top line of each box. The most funding that a teacher can earn is 32,000. Now, if we go to a real life example, this is based on this year's data at our neediest campus. It had the highest tier value. And as you can tell, going across, the student percentage in each tier is on line two and they have 73% in tier five. So, you multiply that times the student point value and basically they come up with 3.6 total that campus does. And you take that times the multiplier for the master teacher, which is 5,000, and they get an additional 18,000 on top of the 12,000 base. So, the total allotment funding at our neediest campus for a master teacher, which is the highest level, would be $30,000. And in the plan, we did a survey and we did like a, we took some different examples and this is the best we came up with. So, the master teacher gets 70% of the funding. The other teachers on the campus share equally 20% and then the district retains 10% for administration of the program. Each campus has to have a mentor for the teacher. So, on this campus, one master teacher would earn 30,000. If they had five, they would earn 150,000. But that basically, the master teacher receives the highest percentage. Any questions?
As you're thinking of your questions, the allocation there on the percentages, on how they're spread out, we adjusted those at central office. What came back from the survey was a, what I perceived to be a fairly watered-down distribution that didn't really mesh well with the reason we have the TIA. And that is for teachers to, that are in the core areas, I won't say tested grades, but core areas, to improve student achievement, incentivize the improvement of student achievement within those as far as the data goes and certainly keep those, while we believe that all of our teachers are important and all of our curricula is important, this, the design of TIA was centered around improvement of reading language arts, mathematics, science, and social studies. So, the distribution was a little bit more equally distributed. It wasn't equal, but it was getting closer to that. And so, we went back and actually did that and we did it for a few reasons. One was to match the purpose of why we're actually able to access the TIA and apply for it. The second thing was in anticipation of, that we wanted to make our district a place to where those teachers that did jump into those core areas, reading language arts, mathematics, science, and social studies, the opportunity at a high level of compensation. You take a 15-year teacher in Tyler ISD that makes 54, 55? And you add on that 21, that's a, we're talking about better than assistant principal pay, which is really what was designed by the commissioner and the legislature to keep better teachers inside of classrooms and not just chase the money. But the other reason was that anticipation is each district's TIA plan is going to look different. And if District, if we're District A and District B designs their TIA plan to a more, I won't say watered-down, it's just such a, I'm going to say watered-down distribution of the funds for student performance, if we were to do that, then the district, other district, if they had a higher level of distribution for that master teacher, it would incentivize the master teacher in our school system to hop over to that other school system. The adverse is true. We want to make sure that our system is at the very top, as much as we can tolerate, to where if there is a more watered-down version in District B, they'll jump over to District A for us because, remember, this follows, the funding follows the teacher. The formulas reside within the district, the funding follows the teacher. So, that's kind of why, how we came up with this as well and also incentivize the rest of the campus by having some distribution there as well. But certainly, we're really interested in that. Remember, the incentivization is for teachers that hold certifications, especially at the elementary level, or those that are maybe coming out of college, to have those core certifications so that they can make an impact on the reading, language arts, development of our students, along with mathematics, science, and social studies. So, that's why the formula is the way it is.
Is that clear?
Okay. Any discussion or does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. I just want to make sure I understand it because I'm not sure I do. So, student achievement is one of the components that a teacher, that goes into the designation of the status. So, for me to become, not me, obviously, but for a teacher to become recognized exemplary or a master teacher, we looked at previously, kind of all the components go into that. Student achievement is one of those. As you said, then, the money follows the teacher and the money increases or decreases based off the need of the environment they go to serve in. Correct?
That's correct.
So, if I'm a master teacher and I show up at a low-performing school, my funding goes with me to that school and the other teachers in that low-performing school get 20% of my bonus. Is that correct?
We're going to let James Kuratin kind of take us through some of this here in a minute. But yeah, that is the understanding.
Designed a lot of compensation plans in my day. I certainly can see why rewarding the teachers on the campus where that teacher earned their certification would be a good use of funds. It, I'm having a hard time understanding the value add of those teachers in the low-performing school for recruiting a master teacher there. I mean, that's usually a principal function, an AP function, maybe there's some peer effect as well, but that seems like, so I get we need money to administer it. I share your concern that a watered-down plan will cause people to jump. And although we don't know perfectly what everyone else is doing, 20% to form a pool for teachers in a low-performing campus where over time, hypothetically, there's not an increase in student achievement, that doesn't seem like money that's going to promote the aims of this overall effort, which is to get the most money in the hands of the teachers who are raising student achievement.
We are open to adjustments from this board dais in regard to that. I will say this, part of the flaw, the design, not unless it's a flaw or not, but part of the design was to put a committee together. And you know as well as I do that committees do regress to the mean in a lot of ways. And we did have a variety of different types of content areas represented in our committee. And again, they came up with a much more distributed dollar amount compared to what you have up there, to the point to where we actually played with raising that master teacher level or the tiered levels, the master, the recognized, or all the different ones that they have now, higher to where it was almost negligible on any other adjustment in percentages. So, if you're not going to go completely 100% towards the teacher identification there, that's about a cut point there to where it's worth any type of other distribution. So, you can play with those numbers if you want to. We can certainly talk about those. Maybe Tasha can get on her computer and figure out what those are right now and y'all can decide those if that's the adjustment that y'all want to make.
So, I just have another question. So, to the extent that a master teacher shows up on a low-performing campus and the performance on that campus improves, certainly wouldn't have any issue with the money going to all the teachers on that campus in a pool. Is it possible to, in any way, restrict the funding going to the teacher pool if after a certain point, the performance doesn't improve on that campus? Is that possible to do it that way within the guidelines they've set or?
I think there is something built in that for the other teachers that get it and there's some attendance built into this, too. But this is the, I wouldn't say it's always the lowest performing, it's just the neediest campuses as far as the economically disadvantaged. But I think James would probably know more about the, how we're doing.
Yeah, risk loads, I think is probably a better way to identify that and we've got a refreshment of that coming up so that we know where those, where our pockets are across the school system. But like, take Douglas, for example, formerly improvement required, but now actually a B campus. It's not just a thing that was just low-performing adjuster, it's actually where, I guess, students are maybe more of those tier five, tier four and five students, based on their economic disadvantage, will be served. So, it could be an A campus.
Yeah, I think their factor is a 3.2 Douglas.
Douglas's?
So, it's pretty close to this.
Yeah. So, there's actually incentivization, obviously based on the economic status of the kids to go to all of our campuses. I mean, if you take Jack, who's got our lowest, excuse me, our, yeah, our lowest percentage of high economic disadvantaged students, they still will qualify in here and actually a master teacher there would actually be rewarded for growth and for student performance as well.
They would mainly just get the base. The factor was maybe, I think they were less than one, so they would get part of the multiplier.
Yeah.
But it's, it just varies by campus.
Marty, I guess maybe what Fritz was saying, I'm not sure, but to go back to the very basics of this, if the master teacher is where the money's going to, why does 20% of it go to the school? What was the reasoning behind that instead of just all of it going to the teacher?
Yeah, Ms. Cano, why don't you talk about that? But I'll just go ahead and reiterate, we were required to put a committee together.
Yeah.
This was not the superintendent saying thou shalt go for the TIA and I think we're all on the same wavelength here.
It was, the committee was made up of every teacher of the year and a couple past teachers of the year from basically every campus, you know?
Principals, too?
Yes.
We did have principals on there, yes.
And I will add that when we did incentive pay, gosh, in '07-ish, the board thought it was a great idea. The, maybe the teachers' administration didn't think it was such a good idea.
Probably.
And, and I didn't know why, so I want to make sure we don't have that disconnect again, you know? So, if there is a reason that 20% should go to the school for that person's qualifications, I just would rather know now than us say, well, it should be 100 and then we have a disconnect again and then it doesn't work and it gets pulled the minute the majority of the board leaves.
Yeah, I think you probably answered your question with the buy-in. I mean, and that's why we were probably told, the design coming out of the legislature and then the rules from TEA on how you get to your application submitted, the requirement of that district-wide committee was for that, by that same reason, that it looked like a very, because it is very controversial nationwide, it has been for 25-plus years, about incentivizing academic growth for students, or at least that's what the media tells us. I don't know if that's a controversial thing or not, I'm all in. We had had this discussion before the '86 legislature about what we were wanting to do in regard to some of this. And there are other school systems that have already had these things in place, these Cohort A school systems of all places. You'd think that it'd be the most unpopular thing in Dallas, Texas right now to do something like that, but I'm going to tell you what, when you've got teachers that are making upwards of $80,000 to $90,000 under their plan over the last four or five years, it's a very popular program there. And there's a lot of folks that are participating, core and non-core, is that correct, Mr. Jones in Dallas?
That's right.
Okay. And so, there is a, there is a distribution that seems to be working whenever you start talking about that, but maybe Ms. Cano can answer some more.
Right. So, one of the things in the, in the program is that we, the district has the option of how the funds are going to be distributed. The non-negotiable is the 10% for the district so that we can operate the program or manage it and the rest, the district and the committee decide on how it's going to be spent. So, let's say that we have a teacher and now every single teacher in that campus has the opportunity to earn a designation, right? So, they can be either a recognized teacher, an exemplary, or a master teacher based on their data, but it's two points. It's not just you get a designation, you get a designation, you don't. It has to be with their teacher observation and if their teacher observation's really high, then we expect their student data to be really high, too, and that's how the designation is going to be earned. So, we, we are not going to be the ones that determine, it's going to be whatever data comes out of the campus. And the reason for the 20% for the rest of the teachers, so let's say that you have a third grade teacher that earns a designation and she is a teacher, he or she is a teacher that makes $50,000 and then they... And then they get to earn this extra thirty thousand dollars because they have a master designation on their teaching certificate. It's going to go on their actual teaching credentials, it's going to stay on their teaching credentials for five years. So they're going to be making eighty thousand dollars. Now, the rest of the twenty thousand dollars that's going to be distributed among all the other teachers means that that second grade teacher that maybe doesn't have a designation can earn some funding because she's sending some well-prepared students into that third grade classroom, right? And so it creates that level of buy-in for the whole campus so that we're all performing well because it's to the benefit of every single teacher. So if first grade's doing a great job at preparing their students, that data's just going to follow the student. And if the teacher's doing well, then they have the potential to earn the designations as well. So it's more of a creating that buy-in for everyone to be pulling together in the same direction. And that's the benefit of having some of the funding go to the rest of the school.
I had a question in regards to the individual, the master teacher for instance. Are there any restrictions regarding how long that master teacher stays on that campus?
So that's what Dr. Crawford was talking about. If we have it that we have a seventy percent, seventy percent of what you earn from your designation is what you get and it's thirty thousand dollars at a campus, it may only be fifteen thousand that you earn at another campus based on the risk load. See, because it's about the schools that have the most need. So the premise of the whole program is for us to have the most effective teachers at the neediest schools. And so if, if I'm a teacher and I'm making eighty thousand dollars at school A, but the other school I'm only going to earn fifteen out of the thirty, I'm gonna wanna stay where I make the thirty thousand extra.
That was my concern in regards to the master teacher. If she's getting thirty thousand dollars for being on that campus for one year, if she chooses to leave that campus the next year and go to another campus, she said the money go with her. But you're saying that it's a different amount.
It's, it's a different amount. It depends on that risk load for the, for the school. So our neediest schools, they're gonna have the higher percentage of what the teacher gets. So let's say school A gets thirty thousand dollars, but with the same master designation at school C, I may only get fifteen thousand or twelve thousand.
But if you have, if you have school D, which is outside of our district and they have a different formulation and they give a hundred percent, they might look that way, I'm just saying.
Right.
And one question, you cited the example of a teacher, a second grade teacher who sends well-prepared students onto third grade where they have the benefit of a master teacher. And this proposal would give a small amount of money to that teacher. Wouldn't the opposite also be true? And that if there was a poor teacher who sent unprepared kids, she would actually, or he would actually receive the exact same amount of money as the second grade teacher who was doing a great job?
So we are the ones that get to plan how that money is distributed, right? So we are still going to be looking at the data that that teacher is producing even if they don't have the designation. So there's, there's many factors that are going to be taken into consideration. Besides that, it doesn't necessarily have to go to the teachers directly in compensation. It can go to the teachers in form of staff development or initiatives that the school decides they're going to do to make it better for the rest of the teachers. That part of it still has to be determined based on how many teachers get a designation. So attendance is going to be a factor for all the other teachers too. If you're a, a teacher that their data's not very good and you're, you miss a lot of school and your data's not good, we, the district gets to determine what kind of funding, if any, they get or compensation.
And so maybe then it should say, instead of other teachers on campus shared equally, maybe it should say something about determined by the district. I mean, cause if we're gonna be able to distribute this to people who are, you know, carrying their weight, I mean, it seems a little more just if you're taking money out of the pocket of the, the one who's bringing it. And the, the only other thing I can think of in taking some of that money from the master teacher who's bringing it to the campus is there a possibility that other teachers see that master teacher going and they know that there might be a little more at that campus, so they might wanna follow them and therefore you're getting more invested teachers at this campus, you know? And I don't know if there's enough money if you spread out six thousand bucks amongst, you know?
The incentivization of, you know, cause you know, you may wind up, one is, again, I wanna go back to the teacher ed program, the teacher prep programs, where, where we've had these discussions at the dius about the shortages of certified teachers across the, the country. And the fact that even our teacher prep programs are failing to provide us with certified individuals for these core areas. In other words, giving coaches, people wanna coach these PE certifications just so they can say that they've got graduation rates taken care of, even though I've got, I got one of those, but I got more also. That's an issue. The same thing with, we were trying to encourage folks to get into the profession and then targeting where those folks are going to be working while they get into the profession. So yes, it, it will be incentivizing for, for folks to jump into that third grade or fifth grade reading teacher spot because they're gonna be able to, to qualify for this. Whereas it may not be as incentivizing to, to not be in one of those, but they could potentially get something. One thing you wanted to add, Bridget?
Yeah, just as I wanted to speak to what Durbin Hager said about the first grade teacher that was not preparing students very well. Every teacher in the district will continue to be appraised. And so if their appraisals are poor, then that teacher won't remain. They will be exited, they won't just be allowed to sit there and soak up what the other teachers are, are bringing to the table. You've gotta, everybody is expected to be a high performer. You may or may not get to that designation, but you're still gonna be expected to pull your weight or you're not going to be a part of the district. Because all students deserve good stuff and that's our charge to make sure that we use our evaluation tools to make sure that you are, you are working towards that, whether you, whether you achieve that or not. And in addition to that, we are not going district-wide with this. We're starting with six campuses that we're focusing on, on those high needs campuses with the, with the highest risk loads that, that you've heard Dr. Crawford speak to. So as we go, there will be an opportunity to modify certain things in the, in the, in the process. First objective is to solidify our data points, the things that we're gonna look at to determine whether or not a teacher is high performing or not. And then we will move forward from there. And that's the work that Texas Tech will be going through in this data collection year, that's our twenty twenty-one school year. So that, that's where we are right now. And yes, absolutely, continue the conversation regarding the distribution on the, on the particular campuses because we want it to be incentivizing, we want it to be fair. And we also wanna make sure that we're setting all of our students in the district up for success. So that, that's the objective. So it's a lot of moving parts to it. And so those teachers that, that are pulling their weight, hopefully they'll get to the point where their student data and other data points will get them to one of those designations. If you're not pulling your weight, then you need to exit Tyler ISD. But that's, that's part of the overall work.
Then I would say what Mr. Washman said, you know, that's not really what this says on this sheet we've got. It doesn't say what, what you just said, it just says shared equally.
You're talking about this behind this right now?
Yeah.
We, we, we will change that.
We can change that. The submission data is a fifty.
Okay. How about, how about something different, Tasha? I know that was just kind of a placeholder there.
You don't have any options. It says this percent for the teacher, this percent for other teachers, and eight percent for us total. There's no options.
Okay. But, okay, so that's what I'm saying, at, at the board dius, in this bordering, what we're sending to Tech or whatever, we're sending to TEA, we're gonna, we'll do what we got it. But in here, we will determine the distribution. Okay.
So we make up the guidelines for that twenty percent in regards to how they receive it. And you were saying that each given appraisal, so possibly we could say something like we give them a certain percentage based on their appraisal of the money that's there. So that it would be based on their performance.
We can be specific in the weighting of it and we can be where it's not distributed equally.
Right, oh yeah.
We'll, we'll outline that in the application, that's an easy fix under the weighting section.
But that's not required, we're not required to, for it to be equally given to all the teachers on the campus.
We get, no, we get, yeah. The district determines that.
The district determines, okay.
And I'll, I'll say this, just if anybody watching at home is wondering, on the, on the first page of this slide, the, the multiplier that they use, that's set by the state.
That's set by the state.
And we get to choose the distribution from a hundred percent to the teacher to, you know, seventy. And, and what Dr. Crawford said is basically at seventy percent, if you're gonna give twenty percent, that's about where it, it makes any sense to do. Otherwise, you might as well not do anything at all.
That's correct. And that'd be something y'all would need to, to talk about. If you wanna adjust that, would we need to take a vote on that today, Tasha?
Yes.
Those percentages are gonna be locked in. So if y'all wanna make any tweaks on that, today's the day to do that.
Let me say that on, what we're looking at today is approving the, the application that we're sending in for TEA.
Yes.
For TEA. We can do that, but we can, as it is, because that's what they see. You don't have a little place in there to clarify how you're gonna distribute it.
Right.
So we can approve the application as it is, but then we can clarify with maybe an additional comment for the records in the, in the board meeting and as it's clarified to, to personnel in the district.
Yes, that is correct. Yes, the one thing we do need today is the seventy, twenty, ten.
Right. And we have the option of changing the seventy and the twenty, but not the ten, right? Is that what I heard?
Right, the ten is, yeah.
Right.
And the ten may be utilized either here, like part of somebody's salary.
Right.
Or it could be used on any type of software that we buy to do the calculations.
Each teacher.
Okay. Yeah, there's a...
It's five hundred dollars.
Five hundred dollars for us to send, I don't know how they ended up with five hundred dollars, but... Yeah, cause you gotta start thinking about TRS implications on this as well. Oh, that's right. What's the benefits you're talking about? I tried it, okay.
Now, the good thing is, is that once we get going just on the six campuses and we see that things can be tweaked or amended, we will have the opportunity to amend our application once a year. So there will be the possibility to change some of those things.
Can you change percentages?
I don't know about the percentages, I can, I can imagine that once you get going, they'll let us.
Okay.
Okay, so...
How frequently, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
How frequently do we have the opportunity to change, say, once each year we can renew it?
Once per year, we'll be able to, that's what we were told, once per year.
Okay. So committee got together, committee gets together and then finally they take a survey. Survey comes back and it was a little more watered down than administration wanted it to be. But it was clear that everybody on this big committee, one, it made up of all of our master teachers and some principals, wanted some of the money going back to other teachers on the campus. It was more watered down, y'all came up with, if we're gonna give any, it's gotta be this much, twenty percent because anything else is just totally negligible. And so that's where we are right now and we as a board just need to decide if we're comfortable with that or if like Andy said, there'd be kind of a disconnect or coup amongst the staff and what the board wants to do.
I have a question. Who came up with the percentages of seventy and twenty? Was that the committee or was that the administration?
It was Tasha and I got in there and played around with the percentages a little bit. I don't, do you remember what the percentages were for what the committee recommended?
Forty and ten.
Fifty, forty, ten, wow.
So...
I was, I was surprised, I was on that committee and had to take the survey and I was a little surprised at those results when I saw them. I just, I, I don't think I voted on an actual, whatever, I just said the, the teacher who's bringing it needs to get the overwhelming lion's share of this stuff. And I was surprised at how many people actually wanted to just kinda wash it amongst the, the campus, but that was just me.
Teachers like to share.
Yes, yeah.
I think that's, that's, so part of what we're dealing with is a cultural issue. And Mr. Bergfeld, you mentioned the cultural disconnect last time. I know the long-term aim of this is to make this profession more attractive so that more people are going into teacher prep problem, uh, programs because they realize they can earn the amount of money that they'd like to earn.
Sure.
And so it, it is very much the culture of education that everyone shares, we're all in this together and there's an aspect of that is true. There's also an aspect, isn't it, that people bring different skills to the game. I mean, I've had six kids in this district. We've had good teachers and we've had...
Struggling.
Struggling teachers. We've had teachers who aren't at the district anymore, thankfully. So, so this is counter-cultural to offer incentive pay. But I'd be against diluting it to the point that it is less important and less a culture changer and less an attractor for people into the profession. One other, just as an example, if I'm on a campus that has one master teacher and if it's spread between forty teachers, that's a hundred and fifty dollars that as a teacher over the course of nine months, I don't think a hundred and fifty dollars is gonna motivate me one way or the other to be a better teacher. But I have taken the six thousand dollars out of the pocket of the master teacher to be able to do that. So I know we have some flexibility on what we do with the twenty percent. Certainly pro-rata divided by the number of personnel on a campus, in my personal opinion, would be the absolute worst thing to do with that money. That it would be guaranteed to be going to places in a school, in any organization that would need to improve, so...
Just to, while it's hot on my mind, Dr. Kurden, did we kinda run an analysis of master teacher eligible folks? And we did come up with, at, at quite a few of our campuses, more than one or two, correct?
Yes.
Correct. Yeah, we ran it across the whole district and we broke it down by campus to see how many would be master, how many would be exemplary and how many would be recognized. And yeah, we have more than one in many cases. So we looked at it against the state standards and then some other standards that we wanted to make sure were important to us, so...
So, so the reason I'm bringing that up is if you've got a couple or three at each campus, it's not gonna be a hundred. If it's just one, obviously you're right.
If forty's the right, I mean, I picked forty.
Yeah, but if you've got a couple or three on the campus, then that, that number's gonna go up a little bit more because of the pool of money that you're gonna get for the, for the, for the designated teachers. For the non-designated teachers, that, that money'll go up a little bit. But you're right, one teacher identified as a master, exemplary or recognized teacher and then distributing that, all the rest of, that is gonna be quite the lack of incentive. But, but at the same time, if you have more than, if you have three or five or seven, and I think some of our campuses probably did have that, and you're gonna have a little bit more of a distribution there as opposed to what you were describing just now. That, that's a worst-case scenario.
My, my concern is the teachers, we need to keep our good teachers for sure and I, I strongly believe in that. But also I'm concerned about the campuses overall rating. The master teachers being on a campus that's been low performing and then encouraging the other teachers on that campus to do better as well. And I, I think ultimately, my biggest concern, I, I wanna keep our good teachers. My biggest concern is the campus improving. Making sure the kids are getting what they need from the teachers that's in the classroom. And the more people we can attract to those campuses that have, well, the incentive is good, but have the right attitude with the performance evaluations and everything else, the more people we can keep on that particular campus, the better it is. Because the long run, it's gonna improve the school overall and that's our major goal. So I, I think that the amount based on the number of master teachers will make a big difference if they're somehow, and I think that seventy percent will attract them there, but keeping them there is the biggest concern. So the school over long haul will improve.
Sure.
So that's the thing that I think that we, we really need to look at the big picture in regards to the, keeping the master teacher in place and if the incentive helps, that's great. But overall, performance of the school is the big key.
Sure.
From my concern.
No doubt. And, you know, we just went through, you know, assigning six different principals to our campuses. That's been a big chore of ours the last six years as to hire effective principals that Superman and Superman- the last six years, is to hire effective principals that Superman and Superwomen is what we're looking for, to be a principal in Tyler ISD. That goes a long way in attracting quality teachers as well, but this program will incentivize what we traditionally said hard-to-staff campuses.
Right, right.
We'll attract those. And then at our other campuses, if, if our campuses actually are the ones that provide those master teachers to go to a tier-five campus, a little bit easier to backfill at some of the, at some of the other campuses that we have, especially with new teachers coming into the profession. So you're exactly right. It's, it is a, it's a great incentivization to make our schools better. And it's not just about the teacher compensation, it's about the outcomes for the kids. And that's what's gonna ultimately lead to a teacher being labeled as master, not just on their appraisal.
Right.
Uh, they've gotta have the data that goes with it. And, and I think that's something that's, that we all need to remember, that this is data-driven and not appraisal-driven. And I will say one more thing about the appraisal. That's actually being looked at as part of this data validity that we're sending off to Tech. They're looking at whether or not our principals are authentic in their appraisal of our teaching staff. Because even though they redid, Ms. Atkins, they redid the P-DOS. Remember, we used to do the P-DOS stuff? I got appraised on P-DOS. They went to T-Tests. Well, we've found that even in T-Tests, appraisals are still giving pretty high to the favored teacher, but the, the data may not be there for the, for the performance and the outcomes.
So this whole next year, they're calling it the data capture year, and Texas Tech will extract all of our evaluations for T-Tests from all of the teachers, and they will analyze them to make sure that there's no discrepancies. You know, Campus A is normally rating all of their teachers super-high, and their data's really low. So we are not even going to be responsible for doing that. We're having Texas Tech, the state is having Texas Tech do that evaluation. And because of that reason, for the whole entire year in the plan, we have built in where we're going to do heavy training with the school administrators, all the appraisers, so that we can have that in a rate or reliability, and a teacher in School A is being rated the same way as in School B.
And I like that idea, and I like him, I like the idea, the twenty percent of giving everybody. I was a part of that group that only certain people get career ladders, and that caused animosities on campuses.
Yes.
And teachers were not kind to one another during that season. And so you want, you want that culture where teachers are caring for each other, and so even if it's in training, if I'm a horrible teacher, and I'm salvageable, then the, probably that twenty percent will go to training me and helping me.
That's correct.
My kids may not score high, but I might, they might have some value added.
Right.
So shouldn't I get something for adding value to my student that came to me poorly, and I let them, helped them go up some, so I, I want to add some value.
That's right.
But when you just eliminate everybody and don't give, then people are gonna start hating the master teacher. They're not, they're gonna start not working with the master teacher. They're gonna start hiding my materials and hiding
Right.
the information I know, I'm not going to share with you, because you're gonna be a master teacher, and I'm not gonna get anything. So then you're gonna cause a climate of not so liking each other. So I like the idea of sharing, giving somebody, giving me something
Yep.
to show that I'm trying.
That's right. And truly, the seventy percent is going to be the fastest way for our teachers to become high, highly paid. The goal of the, of the TIA plan is to get teachers six-figure salaries. And so with seventy percent, you know, if we have a teacher that has the experience in making, you know, sixty, sixty-five thousand dollars, I mean, we, we do have the potential to get the teachers as close as possible to six-figure salaries, being that they're effective, and they have proven through their evaluations and their student performance, then they, they should definitely get that.
I, I think I read something about support staff. Was there something in here regarding support staff and incentive for them as well?
The support, that has to do with the, with the district, and how we determine that's going to be done.
Okay, what that support staff is, okay.
Okay, so seventy, twenty, ten plan.
Yes.
I think, is everybody comfortable with the twenty, as long as we're diligent with that twenty? Or is, does somebody wanna change the, the whole thing here? So what, Dr. Crawford?
One more thing. Dee is watching, by the way.
Yes, she can.
Our consultant, Dee Carney, even though she couldn't participate today. She's just kinda throwing some things out there for the board to consider. One is that the incentive is for teachers to pursue the designation. So that's really what the design is all for, and she, she just threw it out there. What about seventy-five, fifteen, ten, or eighty, ten, ten split? That's something that y'all could potentially, I don't think you can go a hundred percent, obviously, because ten percent's gotta go to that, but that would be up to y'all to, to plug in right now, with maybe the hopes, a year from now, we could actually change those percentages.
If there's value in that other percentage, and it's bringing something to the campus that maybe, on the surface, you know, we don't see, then I'm, I'm not opposed to it at all. I would mainly just like to see that the master teacher is getting the overwhelming line share of what they've earned.
Yeah.
And, and, but at the same time, if there's some animosity that would come along with it, it doesn't seem just to me, but I get it. I get how groups work. Then maybe, yeah, providing some money from that teacher's experience to put into programs on the campus. I mean, maybe, you know, if there's value there, then, you know, I say, you know, we do it. But does anybody have any ideas? Is everybody comfortable with seven, twenty, ten?
Y'all should've seen what the fifty, forty, ten look like.
Mr. Washman, I think this has been a great discussion, and it's been every, got valuable input, we all did, from everybody as part of this, but I think at this point, we probably need to move on and go with the administration's recommendation. It's for a year. If we come back next year, and they do a report and say, "It didn't work, or here's why it didn't work," I think, I think, you know, either way, it's a good place, but it's good discussion.
With the amendment of the shared equally part being tweaked in some manner.
Yes, I'll take care of it.
Okay, so I
Beyond that, I, I could support the seventy percent if there was a follow-on report on how the twenty percent's gonna be allocated. It sounded like that was a plan that was yet to be determined. And, and so I, I'd like for this board to weigh in on how that twenty percent is allocated, if we go with seventy, twenty, ten.
And the first year of this thing is not until two or three years away.
Twenty twenty-one.
Right?
It's twenty-one, twenty-two, that's the first year we'll have funding.
Twenty-one, twenty-two. So we've got some time to, but, okay. So do I, do I have a motion to approve the administration's recommendation on item D here?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, the DIAS have it, and the motion carries. That was a good discussion. Thanks, everybody, for your input, filling us in there. Okay, we're moving on to our continuous improvement student outcomes, approval of our Head Start annual program and self-assessment.
Yeah, this is the annual requirement to put in front of the board. You had that in your packet. It's, it's, since two thousand and seven, the Head Start Reauthorization Act for Head Start Performance Standards, you're gonna get this in front of y'all to look at. We've typically not had a large discussion at the board meeting about this, but y'all have been able to, to, to call either Dr. Kristi Hansen or Venora Jones, if you do have questions about what's in your packet.
Okay. Do we note it? Does anybody have any discussions or questions about this particular matter, or do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the, the annual report for Head Start.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carries, and we will now go into executive session. Marty, do we have any action to follow coming out of executive session?
I think we have some personnel.
Okay, we'll go into executive session, and we do have a, an action to follow. We have reconvened from executive session, and we do have action to follow, so I will take a motion to consider the action discussed in executive session.
Okay, Mr. President, I move that we accept the resignation of Kristen Dickerson and execute the associated release paperwork.
Thank you, Dr. Nation. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Mr. Hager, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries, and now I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.